Good morning. We will call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for February 13th. And at this time, we will ask the birthday boy to lead us in salute to the flag.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So rude. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I mean Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Chair, Marsha Burke Bigler.
Here.
Kitty Jung, Vice Chair.
Present.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Von Hartung.
On the phone.
Thank you. Jeannie Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Leparelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent. You have a call, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. Mr. Manager, you'll go to our first appearance.
Yes, Item 3 is an appearance. This is a presentation and update on Nevada Water Innovation Campus and feasibility study on highly treated reclaimed water. I'll let Assistant County Manager Dave Solero introduce this item.
Good morning, Mr. Solero.
Good morning. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager, Chair and Commission. Thank you for having us here today. The Water Innovation Campus was officially inaugurated as a program at the University of Nevada Reno on August 24th, 2017. The Innovation Campus is a collaboration between the University of Nevada, Cities of Reno and Sparks, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, the Western Region Water Commission, Nevada Department of Transportation, and Washto County. We're here to develop real-world integrated solutions for the regional needs to demonstrate national leadership in the water sector, and Washto County is a founding member of this dynamic research organization. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Krishna Pegila, the Water Innovation Campus Director, Professor and Program Director in Environmental Engineering at the University of Nevada Reno. Mr. Pegila.
Good morning, Doctor. Good to have you here this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Burke Bigler. Good morning, Commissioners. I am happy to be here and acknowledge your leadership in supporting the Nevada Water Innovation Campus as well as the university. As you've heard that we inaugurated this Nevada Water Innovation Campus in August with the goal of developing water solutions for the region as well as for the national leadership. This particular partnership was led by Washto County, and many of you were at the inaugural function, and it's really a partnership that many other regions and cities around the country are looking at as a model between the university and the community. And the partnership really revolves around the community engagement and sustainability of water sector in the region, and it will lead to many benefits, including economic growth in the region. The Nevada Water Innovation Campus has a very, very strong support from the university leadership. As you saw at the inaugural function, that the leadership of the university were all present to the highest level, all the way to provost, and they have provided financial support as well as resources to make this partnership work very well into the future. Now, if I can move to the next slide, which is the vision of the Nevada Water Innovation Campus. I want to say three things about this particular vision, as you can see from the language. To become a nationally, internationally recognized innovation campus, to solve real-world problems in the water sector that are necessary for the region, and to provide opportunities for economic growth by increasing and improving the water resiliency of the Truckee Meadows region. So if I can go back to solving the real-world problems, it's really a first time we have come intentionally as a region to gather where all the agencies that are there at the bottom of that slide with the logos have created this partnership to solve real-world problems in effluent management, in stormwater management, looking at future opportunities for portable reuse from water reclamation, and many other issues that our plants, water treatment plants and wastewater treatment plants are dealing with in meeting permits as well as looking at water as a resource rather than wastewater that we treat and leave it back into the river. So we are very excited to be in this partnership. The university will provide expertise as well as additional capacity, the staff of all the agencies, in addressing these problems. And the second point I want to make is that through these activities and through the volume of activity we're going to do with the partnership, we want to leverage that for the university to become a national, internationally known leader in the water sector. And this is very critical for the university and for the region because the university is focused on becoming what we call Carnegie Very High Classification, which means we will be in the same league as big universities that have made significant impacts to their regions, like University of Michigan, University of California Berkeley, Ohio State, where they have become a center of the economic development for those regions. So we want to be that, and this Nevada Water Innovation Campus is in tune with that goal. And we, as those of us in the water sector, are doing our part to get there. And lastly, we clearly realize the nexus between economy and water, particularly in this region where water is in limited quantities. So by doing some of the activities of the Water Innovation Campus, we hope to improve that resiliency of the region in terms of water and improve the economic growth of the Truckee Meadows region. So one activity that has resulted in us going forward at this Nevada Water Innovation Campus is the Advanced Water Treatment Study, which I'm going to ask Rick Warner because it's a regional effort where the university plays a significant role, to come and talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Welcome.
And I'm Chair, Rick Warner. I'm actually Washto County employee, a senior engineer at Community Service Department. I want to take just a few moments to address a really exciting regional project. When I mean regional, Dave Solero already mentioned, it's Reno Sparks, Washto County, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and also regional water planning. We've come together as one group, all the regional entities, to explore new options for expanding our water portfolio in the region through expanding our uses of water recycling or reclaimed water uses. This is really an outcome of the state of Nevada issuing out new regulations that allow greater uses of reclaimed water, including up to recharging groundwater basins. Obviously, something of that nature requires a lot of expertise, advanced water treatment technologies. And the region, as we came together to explore this new opportunity, we brought on board the University of Nevada, Kristin Pegila, and now he represents the whole university's partnership with us to advance our research capabilities, students, other researchers, to really explore a feasibility study that'll address some key questions. Again, is this region, will it receive significant benefits from more opportunities for reclaimed water use? So UNR brings a vast research capabilities, the regional partnership. This adds not only a great opportunity for us all to work together, but our staffs work together too. We have an example right here. One of our employees is getting a PhD under Dr. Pegila for this Advanced Water Treatment Technology Study. So with that, I know our time is short. It's a very long study, a five-year study with all the regional partners contributing. We're in about year two, and again, this is really the feasibility study for advanced water treatment technologies. We'll answer some key questions that how this community can advance our water portfolio. With that, I can take, Mr. Solero, I don't know if you have any other comments or questions?
Again, Dave Solero, you know, this is just a program that Washto County is proud to be a founder of, moving forward regionally with, you know, an important asset to our community and working for that economic development that this brings. And I think the partnership, you know, with all the community partners and the University of Nevada Reno is something really to be proud of, and we, you know, appreciate that Commissioner Hartung wanted to have this presentation here before the board. And with that, we do have a few minutes left, and Dr. Pegila, if you've got anything else, or we're certainly here to take some questions.
Okay. Commissioners, anybody have any questions for Dr. Pegila or Commissioner Lucy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I just want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Pegila and all the work he's done up at the university, and Rick has been phenomenal. I mean, this has been, it's such an, this is going to be transformative, the work that you guys are doing for our area and for the future generations to come in regards to how we manage wastewater, how we manage water in our area. What you guys are doing will be not only, and this is something I brought up just recently, not just a sustainability issue, but innovation really, truly for our area that will lead our region into the next few generations, but also take the world and provide them with the tools needed to really contribute to water as we continue to grow as a society. And so I want to thank you for all the time and effort that you and all the entities have put in. This is a collaborative effort, not just UNR but Washto County, and obviously Tomwa, City of Sparks, City of Reno, all have participated in this, and I just wish you all the best. And thank you for coming down and presenting. This is phenomenal, phenomenal things you guys are doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You know what? I'm going to defer to Commissioner Hartung, who has been hit by a bus and is at home with the flu, because this was his request, and then I'll go next. Thank you. Commissioner Hartung.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jung. I did not mean to step on you. I apologize. I'm listening on speakerphone, so I'm terribly sorry. But I just wanted to add in, thank you so much, Commissioner Lucy, for the kind words for the campus. You know, this is a passion of mine. These guys will provide the much-needed answers to water resiliency and really transform the way that we not only view but deal with our water supplies and our dwindling, potentially water supplies, the ups and downs that we're seeing currently. This is the only way that I can see that we will be able to move forward in sustaining our region and being able to have a viable supply for futures, future, excuse me, I'm bobbling here and I sincerely apologize, for future generations, as Commissioner Lucy mentioned. So I just thank you all so much for coming. I'm very pleased with the support that we're seeing from Western Regional Water, Tomwa, and other outside agencies and community partners. And so I look forward to solving the problems and appreciate the support again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. No, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I have a question for Dr. Pegila. You said a Carnegie-level institution. Can you explain what that means?
Commissioner Jung, we are currently called National Tier One University.
Okay.
Which is a PhD-granting university. There is one higher classification, which is called Carnegie Very High. So we are now Carnegie High. We want to go to Carnegie Very High Classification, which has certain metrics like amount of research dollar the university has every year from federal as well as regional, and then number of PhDs we produce, which leads to intellectual property that has a significant
Absolutely.
multiplier effect on a region, like you see in the Bay Area. The universities there have done so much.
They've monetized their research.
Yeah, so there are other metrics that allows a university to become Carnegie Very High. We're not going to do that overnight, and that's a goal of both the universities in Nevada, both us, UNR, as well as UNLV. So the Nevada System of Higher Education and the Board of Regions are really focused on that.
Good.
The infrastructure that is being built. In fact, we are going to beground in May for the new engineering building, which is $100 million building of Evans, which is going to be part of that. And our efforts through this Nevada Water Innovation Campus is at the program level. We are really a small cog in the wheel, but we are an important part of that wheel to move the university towards that Very High Classification, which is done by Carnegie Foundation.
Sure. And what other universities are working on this? Do you know?
In Nevada, the two universities are the only universities.
Nationally, though, is there any?
Nationally, there are close to 100 universities which are working on it, but there are already about 50-plus universities which are Carnegie Very High.
Right, but I mean on the water reclamation.
From the, so from the water point of view, Water Innovation Campus type of centers are there in like University of Wisconsin in Milwaukee, there is a water center. University of Cincinnati has a.
Didn't you say University of Michigan and UC Berkeley?
University of Michigan, they are in a higher league. They already have activities like this.
So why would they care about water when they're surrounded by water?
In fact, you know, we feel that way. In fact, University of Michigan is next to a big hole in the ground, which is thousands of miles in radius and, you know, but it's how you take care of, they have too much water.
Okay.
So they have issues with char, with too much water, you know, so stormwater management. So each region has its own challenges and opportunities for water, and our region has it from water deficit point of view.
Absolutely.
So for us to lead in this area would allow us to be, you know, a model for other water deficit regions around the world. And so that's basically, the university has to show that leadership in the field of water that way. And we have lots of programs in the university that allows us to do that.
I think it's great, and let me know how I can help to make you the Carnegie highest level in the world.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Herman.
I just want to say thank you. It's a great program, and it's going to solve a lot of problems for our future, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. You know, in the West, we think of water a lot like gold. It is that kind of a value to us, and although we may have lots of water right now, we all know that that won't necessarily stick around. And so what you guys are doing is wonderful, and thank you very much, and thank you so much for coming and making a presentation to us. And thank you, Commissioner Hartung, for suggesting that they come in. Commissioner Jung, did you have another question?
Yes, one other thing. If the board so agrees, we are in Consent Item 61, going to make a financial commitment in sport of the Nevada Water Innovation Campus in the amount of $25,000. So I just wanted to put that out on the public record that we're fully invested. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Mr. Manager.
That then takes us to Item 4, which is Public Comment. Public comment heard on this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. The comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I have a list of people signed in, so we'll just start with Mr. Carson Webb, and next will be Mr. Sean Pitten. Mr. Carson Webb. And others. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Great. How about you?
I'm good, thanks. This is Kason Webb. We're all a part of the Washto County High School Rodeo Association.
Okay.
And we've come today just to thank you for considering us, for considering your support to help us out to put on our annual high school rodeo, which is held April 21st and 22nd at the Livestock Event Center. This is our second year back there. We have been putting on high school rodeos for the last 50 years in this community. This is Kason, and he'd like to speak just for a few minutes.
Okay.
He's a little bit.
All right. I'm Kason Webb, and I compete in the events of tie-down and team open, and we got our rodeo held on the April 21st and 22nd of the, yeah, man, oh my God, this year. And on behalf of the Washto County High School Rodeo Team, we want to thank you for, yeah, helping.
And really quick, just to give you a little rundown. In high school rodeo, it's now combined with junior high as well as high school. So sixth grade all the way up to 12th grade can compete in these rodeos. These rodeos are every other weekend from September all the way to June. These kids have to keep a 3.0 in high school. They have to have their schools sign off so that they can rodeo, so they're held to the same academic standards as any other athlete in that school. We do a lot of community service in this community with this club. We go out and spend time at the retirement homes. We help feed the homeless. We do a lot of different things. We also put on events to try to get more kids into an understanding of the Western culture and Western way of life and animals and that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to thank you very, very much for considering, you know, helping us out to put on this rodeo, because it means a lot to these kids.
Thank you.
My name's Sean Dixon. I'm the father of Devon Dixon. She's the president of the club. She's at FFA Convention, the Leadership Convention, right now in Muskegon, Nevada. So, and yes, I'd like to thank you guys. We put in a lot of work here. We'd appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we invite you all to come and be spectators of our event in April. You won't be disappointed. These are the young kids that are coming up that will be hopefully performers in the Reno Rodeo, at the NFR. Brendan, who's a little bit intimidated to talk right now, come stand over here, please. He is 12 years old, and we hauled him all the way to Nashville, Tennessee, last year for the Junior High National Finals.
Wow.
He is a roughstock rider. He rides bulls. Dust saddle bronc in junior high, they use steers instead of horses, but he does ride real bulls. He team ropes. So this event goes pretty worldwide. This year, I think they're even inviting Mexico to join us in the, you know, the high school rodeos and stuff.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
And we're nowhere near as intimidating as a bull. Trust me.
And ma'am, could you please state your name and.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
My name is Beth Webb.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You have a great day.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could have any of you who spoke who didn't fill out a card, if you could fill out a card in the back of the room so we can get your information.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have Mr. Sean Pitten. Is that Mr. Sean?
I'm Sean Dixon.
Oh, you're Sean Dixon, so. All right, so let's go to Mr. Brendan Webb.
I'm Brendan.
Oops, he spoke. All right. So let's go, oh, and Ms. Beth Webb spoke, so we've got all your names on there. Mr. Garth Elliott. The infamous, Mr. Garth Elliott. Good morning, sir.
For the record, Garth Elliott, you know, I want to also say that none of them had a single pair of cowboy boots in the bunch, but Garth Elliott, a 45-year resident of beautiful Sun Valley, for the record. I want to transport you for a few moments to the high plains of Montana, the years 1876. In front of you, the remnants of the 7th Cavalry, George Armstrong Custer lying dead on the battlefield in the dead brown grass of June. They'd just gotten slaughtered by up to 11,000 of the Indian nations. And at this time, the squaws are picking through the remnants of the bodies for good things, they're very meticulous about that scavenging. And there was a talk among the squaws about sticking their sewing awls in George's ears. Now, why would they want to do that? They wanted to poke their sewing awls in the George Armstrong Custer's ears. They felt he wasn't listening to them, that he was ignorant and not wanting to hear anything that the Indians had to say at that time. And there's lots of things going on with the Indians, lots of battles, lots of fighting, and lots of trying to put them onto reservations, which was a travesty in itself. So they felt that would be a remedy for old George not listening to them. Last few weeks is especially poignant to me with what's come up with the exotic animals and some of the other things that have come up, that you, as commissioners, may not be listening to your constituents to the degree that would be healthy. I sit and scratch my head many times about the lack of listening going on, and I feel why come down here when you're not listening? So don't be like George Armstrong Custer and deserve a figurative awl in your ear and work on your listening skills. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Denise Ross.
Good morning, Denise Ross. Four, Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley Recovery Committee and Lemon Valley Flood Relief and Assistance. I've got my Tammy shoes on, so bear with me. Okay, I would like to make a formal request to be put onto an agenda. We have not seen Commissioner Herman's proposal to elevate the 40 homes instead of buying out just nine homes. We'd like to make that formal request, please. Also, the electrical poles at Palace in Idaho are now wired with electricity, but they're not wired up to the pumps. How can that save money? We've tried since June, and nothing has been connected. It's a waste of money, I would say. Property values are an issue out in Lemon Valley. Cindy, one of the ladies that always sits with Tammy, the beautiful redhead, she's been trying to sell her home because her husband had to move due to employment. She has a home on the market, and it's not selling simply because of the flood situation. People drive past the Hesco barriers. She's not in a flood plain, yet people aren't even, they'll come in and they'll look at the house, they say it's beautiful, but because of the flood situation, they don't even want to touch the properties out there. Hers is not the only one. We need some kind of solution for what's happening out there. And I know you guys spent the 3-point-something million dollars, but we're going to need more finances poured out there, because that's turning into a terrible disaster that just continues. The water between Nectar and Arkansas is still increasing, and it's getting close to Red Pine Residence with no response from Mr. Solero and his crew. Mr. Solero's report for the North Valley states that there's been no increase in elevation of water, but that because the water is high enough now to backflow past Swan Lake Birm in the middle, the water is rising across from Nectar. It's a very deceiving report. We went to the cab meeting last night for the Prado Ranch North. They are suggesting that for the immediate time that they put in 538 homes right in the flood plain. If the Hesco barriers weren't up, the property that they're going to build on would be in water. They want to bring in so much dirt fill for that property that it's going to run off and all of the homes that haven't, not all of them, but the homes that are in that area that haven't flooded are going to be flooded. That's your responsibility. It's in your hands. They want to build 2,000 homes from that, not just the 538. So please consider how much soil is going to go into that area, and we haven't even fixed a solution.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming today. Ms. Parissa Tashiro.
My name is Parissa Tashiro. I'm here representing the Washto County Regional Parks and Open Space Commission. The commission had prepared a letter recommending above-base funding to address several critical park needs, and since then, it's been brought to our attention that there may not be above-base funding available this fiscal year. But nonetheless, I wanted to share a couple of highlights from the letter in the event that funding becomes available this year or next. I wanted to emphasize that the Parks Department does an excellent job serving our community with the resources it has available. It's responsible for managing over 12,000 acres, including 49 parks, athletic fields, shooting facilities, golf courses, a campground, a museum, and it does all of that on a budget that's $2 million less than it was 10 years ago, and with staffing levels that are two-thirds less than comparably sized jurisdictions. So we ask that you consider the following above-base funding requests. First, $101,000 to increase wages for seasonal Parks Department staff. Current wages for these employees are starting at 825 an hour, which is the Nevada State Minimum Wage, and accordingly, the Parks Department has experienced difficulty recruiting and retaining qualified staff for positions such as park aides, recreation leaders, pool managers, lifeguards, shooting range safety officers. Many of those positions went unfilled last year. So the Human Resources Department and Community Services Department have collaborated on a study that recommended pay grade increases of 5% to 30% for seasonal employees, which would make Washto County more competitive with similar employers, and the above-base funding increase request would allow the Parks Department to implement these increases. Secondly, the commission recommends an above-base increase of $120,000 to support the tree and weed programs. As you know, last year was huge for precipitation, and so we will have increased vegetation in the coming spring and increased fire hazard to our communities. So since the recession-era budget reductions, the Parks Department hasn't been able to fully implement weed abatement programs. They've foregone spraying pre-emergent in many areas. They've foregone spraying pre-emergent in many areas. And an above base increase would allow for implementation of a more aggressive natural resource management plan to reduce wildfire risk and help maintain the ecological health of our parks and open spaces. So, together, these above base funding requests total $221,000. It represents only a 10% restoration of recession era budget cuts, but it would go a long way to enhance park services to our community and help maintain the quality of our parks and services, especially as our region continues to grow. So I'll be sending you a copy of the letter as soon as it's formalized, but until then, I ask you to consider these requests in the event that any funding is available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Levi Hooper. Good morning, Mr. Hooper.
Hello, everybody. I'm the infamous Levi Hooper, voice of the downtrodden. I've been in Reno for many years. I was homeless for five years myself. A lot of people, y'all know my story and everything. Well, we just had our first real snowstorm this week, and you guys know what I'm here for always, to ask for help and see if there's any new stuff going on in the community for the homeless. And I want to thank Herman and all y'all for your donations and the things you've helped me out with. This last election, there was a violation of the open meeting law. Possible action. Oh, another thing I was going to tell you all is I'm running for mayor. I'm going to run for mayor. I was the challenger to county commissioner's last election, Tim Miss Brooke Vigler, who won the election. And I'm always here to do the best I can for the community and whatnot. I'm trying to waste my full three minutes, I always come up here and walk away early. So I'm just trying to get my three minutes out. But anyway, I have a, I have a family who's locally, recently homeless, who they need some jackets and blankets and shoes. They have a three-year-old daughter, and I came here to ask you guys if you could maybe help with that or any information towards that. But I remember Bonnie Weber, when she was here, she helped us out, yeah, and everything. And I just, it was so awesome what you guys could do for, you know, with everything, you remember? Remember Bonnie, remember that? That was incredible. That was my first, that was my first meeting. That was my first meeting. That's what made me come back here and made me start all this, you know? I mean, it's really amazing, you know? I was homeless for five years. I did five winters under the Virginia Street 395 Bridge. You know, a lot of people don't even realize that. And it was, it was really a life-changing thing. I'm, I just turned 31 on Christmas Eve, and I can't believe I even did that. That was like a dream that I went through that, you know, like a horrible nightmare, but just something that I can hardly believe is real, you know? But it was a horrible nightmare and, and still to this day, I dream every night about being homeless and being back out there and traumatized by it, you know? And so I usually try and not sleep as much as possible so I don't go back into those dreams, you know? So, it's really messed up, but homelessness stays with you for the rest of your life once you've been there. And just, this is what I do, you guys know me, so God bless you. I guess I'll end it at 15 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Mr. Sam Diney.
Sam Diney, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation, and for the last 25 years, I've been defending the citizens of Reno against many, against the media wacko freaks and against bureaucrats. I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. And by the way, I feel, I feel a little nervous up here because I'm not used to not having a deputy looking over my shoulder protecting me all the time. What's, is this a legal meeting without a sheriff's deputy here? Nice smiley face over there. Also, I think we ought to have somebody check and make sure that was Mr. Hartung up there. You just accepted, I've never heard him boggle anything before, and that man said he boggled something. Anyway, somebody check his, all these smiley faces over here, is that really funny? It's serious that he's attending this meeting serendipitously, yeah, okay, and she's nodding her head too. At any rate, mother's maiden name, social security number, whatever. By the way, I've been to more meetings than all of the citizens, at least more podiums than all of the citizens added together, thousands and thousands of public testimonies, and I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno, and nobody ever challenges that. And you say, well, you really are brilliant, aren't you, Sam? No, it's not my brilliance, it's the fact that I have these epiphanies. Anybody know what an epiphany is? It's a sudden message from God, a sudden message from God, and, and it's just, well, God gave me an epiphany that had me nominate your wonderful county manager over there. He's done an up and walking good job. Same thing with his previous city manager. I nominated, I nominated the Reno Chief of Police and the Reno Fire Chief, and they're both doing a great jobs. I just had another epiphany last night, somewhere along, I don't even know where they come from, when they arrived, but my latest epiphany tells me that Jeff Bezos, Jeff Bezos, everybody knows who he is, he should run for the President of the United States. And not, he's not as a Republican, not as a Democratic Party, he should run under the Amazon Party. And his, and his vice president, his vice president is going to be, guess who? Sam Diney. His motto will be, Jeff's motto will be, vote for me and I'll give you 10 years of free prime delivery. Vote for me twice and I'll give you a lifetime prime delivery. How's that one? There you go. And Sam is going to be his vice president, and Sam's motto is to continue the dismantlement, continue the dismantlement of the dirty, rotten, evil, wacko freak, media freaks, starting with Reno Gazette Wacko Freak Traders.
Thank you, Mr. Diney.
Thank you, thank you.
I see no more speak, speakers under public comment. We will bring this back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Our next item is item five, which is Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do you have anything?
I do, I have one, I wanted to, one piece of information related to the board, and that is, staff is currently undertaking a review of all of our policies in Washoe County, and I have asked that one of the first and that a priority be placed on our harassment policies, to review those, confirm that they're up to date, that they're very clear, they're very understandable, and that all of the processes related to those situations are clear and, as I said, understandable. And this will be one of the first, if not the first, that will come back to the board. It's very near completion on the review of that, and will come to you at a very near board meeting for your review and approval. I just wanted to place it on the record.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, based upon public comment today and what we've heard, I'd like to add the, an agenda item, a future agenda item, and after a future agenda item, forward the discussion further of the elevation of those homes in Lemon Valley. Let's really have that discussion. I'm looking forward to that, and you know, I know, let's see what we can do and see where we get with that. So, that would be my only request at this time. And thank you, and I also want to thank all of my fellow commissioners for my very, very nice birthday wishes today. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Jung, Vice Chair Jung.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. I have quite the list. Commissioner Lucy, or Lucy and I went to the grand opening of the Durrell Academy, and that is a charter school that actually came from Florida. It's a model that embraces arts throughout all of its curriculum, and I guess down in Vegas, there's a seven-year waiting list to get on it, and it's purely lottery, so everybody is eligible to go to this school. And as everybody knows, a charter school's same as a public school, they just have different requirements, but it's free for your children. And I think this, and it's right across from Galena High School, this is going to be a game changer in our community for education. I want to know what we did to help the high school rodeo, because that's news to me. So if we could get a report, they said, thanks for your help, or we need your help. I'd like staff to reach out and exactly find out what that ask was. I held a Sun Valley Leadership Roundtable in which all of the Sun Valley GID Board of Trustees attended and noticed the meeting appropriately, as well as key staff from different areas, code enforcement, health wasn't there, and that was an oversight. And the outcome, or the reason what generated that is Summit Church approached me and they want to adopt Sun Valley year-round, not just one event, not just one cleanup. And so the Sun Valley GID gave great insights of what was needed and necessary to beautify the region and, and to engage the citizens. They are already in one of the schools out there, they want to, they're going to go to the other school as well. They gave out more than 230 brand-new jacket, coats, for winter coats for students, and when they ran, when they had leftover, they went to the other school and moved those jackets out as well. So, we're trying to really, and we're going to have a big celebration in May as a kickoff, and then they are going to, you know, monthly do some sort of service work and not just leave us high and dry. I mean, sometimes people will come out and build us a beautiful garden, but then there's no administrator to make sure that that garden is being maintained. I had a tour of the Community Health Alliance with Councilman Oscar Delgado, he works there. This is a great safety gap and net for health services for the indigent. I went, I attended my very first Nevada Works Board meeting, and, and we meet only quarterly, and the, some of the major issues was the broadband infrastructure or lack thereof, the rules, and that's really having a hard time for them to economically develop, develop, and the people live and die on internet today. We don't have that out there. We also talked about how everybody's budget is flat, which is interesting, like everybody's admitting it instead of saying, no, not us. And then we had a presentation by the Electrical Apprenticeship Program, and I would encourage anybody who is looking for a job, it's a five-year program, but the day you start, you start at, I think, 1385 an hour, full Bennys for yourself and all of your dependents, and a 401K, and you only go up from there, right? Electrical workers make a lot of money. So that, that was a great presentation. Additionally, I attended the inaugural meeting of the Washoe Regional Behavioral Health Policy Board, which was created by the legislature last session, and what this board is, is all the experts in the region. It started out chaired by Senator Leslie, and then she, she gave it over to the board. She organized it, and what it does is it gets everybody in the same room when it comes to behavioral health, mental health, those sort of things, so that they can make solid recommendations, and they get their own BDR too, to the legislature. Senator Ratty was the one who got this done, and she was there as well for the meeting. Open Space and Parks Commission, you heard the letter of support. I do want to go on the record, because I told it to the commission, I'm the liaison to that one as well. I did go on the record with them. I do want to know, anybody that asks anything above base needs to come to us first, and we need to prioritize if the parks get that money. And their ask is tiny compared to what other departments will, will try to finagle. It's okay, you should be finangling. I attended the Business Impact Statement Meeting for Marijuana Permanent Regulations with Dave Solaro and Bob Webb, and we were all the public that showed up for that. And then I also, I'm the liaison to the Senior Services Advisory Board, and our Older American Month is going to blast off because we now have Chris Shiarlo, who is a PIO for Health and Human Services. He has the strategic plan, the, you know, live shots that we're going to do and how we're going to generate, and you should see the, the broad amount of opportunities for seniors during Older American Month. And finally, I went to the Marijuana Public Outreach Meeting, looking at different issues and concerns, and I have to tell you, 15 people showed up from the industry and five people from the public. So, it was a great meeting. I think we were able to knock down some more fear, and fear is okay. I mean, I get it, you're scared, anything you don't understand, you get scared of. But I think we did a good job at that meeting, and I have to point out to the whole staff that did that, Dave Solaro, Jamie Lynn Rodriguez, Saratone, Bob Webb, Dwayne, were you there? Was Dwayne there? No. Chad? Oh, yeah, Chad, was his last name? Geisinger, and the Sheriff's Legislative Liaison. I think we, we put on a nice event, and Dave Solaro had a bet with me that 100 people would show up, and I said 20, so he owes me something. We didn't bet on anything, but, so that's, that's what I've been doing. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung, that is very great. Commissioner Lucy, let me check and see if Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Hartung, do you have anything you want to add?
No, Madam Chair, but I'm lockstep with Commissioner Lucy. I'd love to have a conversation about home elevations in Lemon Valley and the viability of that program and the affordability of that program to ensure that we are spending Washoe County tax dollars and federal tax dollars properly, because it, it seems to be popping up continually as a question, and, and I look forward to having an open public conversation about this. And the last thing is, is I don't know whether Sam Diney is still in the audience, but it truly is me, Sam, and I'm not going to give you my mother's maiden name because she asked me not to. Thank you, Madam.
Tom Segret.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman, did you have something? Okay, Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I wanted to bring out one point that Commissioner Jung brought, it kind of spurred me, the discussion that she had at Nevada Works in regards to internet in our rurals. It is a big challenge, and it is something that we deal with quite diligently at NACO, but it was kind of reassuring. We, Congressman Amade, just within the last six months, brought out Chairman A.J. Pat of the FCC to visit our rural areas and have those discussions in northern Nevada, and there are federal programs that the chairman had assured us and was willing to work with us to get some of that, because the school districts in Persian County and Humboldt County rely heavily on the ability to access internet and have some challenges with some of those rural communities that they have, so that's a benefit. The other thing is the Charter Schools, Durrell Academy, it was wonderfully attended, really neat to be able to participate and help with that process. The governor was in attendance, but I want to, really want to thank our staff here at Washoe County and everything that our staff did to get that charter school really off the ground. This is something, as Commissioner Jung pointed out, that is, is paid for by the state. It is a benefit to all of our residents to, for any child to go there. There is currently a 400-person waiting list for the Durrell Academy up at the, up on Mount Rose, and hasn't even, they just started dirtwork on that. So, it is, it's, it's a challenge. I mean, this is, this is what we're looking at into our future, and constantly, as we keep looking at new challenges in the area, schools and that school choice is going to be one of them, you know, and so we need to continue to work towards it, doing whatever we can, and I was just glad that our staff was able to play a role in that. One other thing too, I forgot, I feel remissed, I want to thank our roads department, you know, with that warm weather we had the last couple of weeks, our roads department was able to get out and repair some cracks throughout the county and do some, you know, continue their continuous work on our county roads, making sure that those are trying to be as maintained and up to standards. And we've got a lot of roads and a very limited budget, so Mr. Dwayne Smith, thank you to your, you and your staff for getting all that stuff taken care of, and Mr. Solaro. We really appreciate the time and effort that the roads to crew and all the departments put in to make sure that that, that work gets done. So, with the limited resources that you have available to do so, so, thank you. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. I have a couple of things. I would like to ask staff, Mr. Manager, I'd like to ask for a broken down analysis of the sheriff's concerns on overtime costs based on the email that he sent out to all of us, and I have some concerns about where that's coming from and ways that, and why it's not being better controlled. So, if you could, I know that you're doing a breakdown, an item-by-item breakdown, but if you could get us a copy or a breakdown of what is actually, where's the overtime cost coming from? And what, you know, why is it not being better controlled? That worries me somewhat. Another thing is, based on the City of Reno's agenda item for their meeting tomorrow, to consider regional fire services, delivery and alternatives, I would like to ask for an agenda item on our agenda to discuss regional fire services, dispatch, crime lab services, all of those issues associated with that, and I'd like that on the agenda sooner rather than later. I've not seen their staff report, so I don't really know what they're talking about, but it seems interesting to me that they would have a discussion on regional fire without including their regional partners, and perhaps they are in fact doing this... And perhaps they are in fact doing the same thing that I'm requesting, and that is to simply say, what can we do? What more can we do? What's out there and what more can we do? So if we could have that. I'm glad that Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Lucy requested the elevation discussion on the homes in Lemon Valley. I think that's an important discussion that, whose time has come and we really need to do something with that. And like Commissioner Vice Chairman Jung, I would really like to know what we've done for the high school rodeo or what we can do for the high school rodeo. I wasn't aware that we'd actually done anything. So thank you very much. That's all I have. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jung, I have you on my agenda, on my, okay. All right, good. And so with that, if there's nothing else, we are moving on. Mr. Manager.
Our next item is Item 6, which is your consent agenda. It's represented today in Items 6A through 6G3.
Okay. Commissioners, anybody have any comments on anything they want polled or they want further discussion on? Commissioner Jung? Vice Chair Jung?
Thank you. I actually have a motion if nobody wants to poll anything.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung?
Just before the motion is made, I just, I again wanted to thank everybody for their support for the water and aviation campus.
Absolutely. Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we have some public comment. So I would ask, we'll go to public comment, and I'll ask Mr. Garth Elliott to please come forward. And Mr. Elliott, will you tell us which item, which items or item?
Yes. I want to discuss briefly 6F1 for the record, Garth Elliott. The proposed raises to the seasonal staff, park staff, et cetera. 2008, a few years back, Washoe County says, or shortly thereafter, Washoe County said, "Sorry, Sun Valley, we can't take care of your parks or your pool. It's on you. We're going to let them go follow. We'll let the pool go for polywogs." That would have been a travesty, as we all know. So what did the GID and the citizens of Sun Valley did, and I'm not representing the GID, I'm just a concerned board member, a very fiscally conservative board member and a ratepayer, they stepped forward and said, "We'll take them over because we want our kids to have something to do in the summertime. Don't let them go follow." And we did. So besides paying taxes through Washoe County on these items, we now get to pay a subsidy on our water bill to support the pools and the park. You were proposing up to a 30% increase with Washoe County because you say that it's in line with the community. Well, unfortunately, not aligned with one of the biggest employers of seasonal people, and that's Sun Valley GID. It is going to impose a strain on us to match you at some point in time. 31% increase for one member alone. It's going to have very serious financial implications. I know I'm not going to change your mind because what's going to happen is going to happen, and I'm not going to drag out my sewing holes, but it's going to have a profound impact on us. It's unfortunate that it hasn't been raised in quite some time. Unfortunate, but this is going to hit us hard. I just want to make you aware of that and my concerns. So thank you for your time, and I'll, well, my name's got two Ts on it, not one. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Ms. Brandhorst, could you tell us which item or items you're speaking on, please?
Yes, it'll be 6C.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. The Health District, I just wanted to tell you, there has been several shootings done in that Health District here in the building. It's Building B, and there has been shootings because the children have been molested. The children have been sexually abused. The children have been needing a doctor's appointments, and also they needed to be evaluated for more than just what they've been going through. They have been ripped, torn by people who devour humans, and this is another reason why they have to go in with their machine guns, their shotguns, to shoot down the nurses, the doctors inside the Health Department. And also the $5,598 in both revenue and expense. This is the surveillance program that you are mentioning. That's not enough money because we have proof that you are the murderer, you are the sexual abuse of the children in the Health Department. You have been abusing children with your electric chainsaw. You have been abusing children with your hatchet knives. Also, the electric chainsaw is not the only thing that you have to chop up these children with. We do have a building across the street. It's the medical building. We have been putting several children back together because you people need more than just to devour the children themselves. There's not much left of their bodies. I have seen so much in plastic bags and because you have to chop them up or chop their heads, and the chopped heads are still being seen on C Street where I live. And I just saw this morning that there's a piece of hair and skin from a dog. You know, this is really crucial that you need to stay out of the C Street area.
Seeing no other public comment, we will bring this back to the board, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Okay, we can just say aye, and I want to say something after that.
Oh, okay. Well, you go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to point out, and I wish she wouldn't have left, our Parks spokesperson, staff listened to the regional parks and open space and already has here on our agenda the $101,000 that the commission has asked for to up the salaries for our seasonal workers because we can't find anybody. So regional parks and open space, we got half of our requests so far. So thank you, Mr. Solaro and staff for, that's a real win in my mind.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Okay, with that said, all those in favor of the motion as opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. And are we, we're not casting a vote on this?
Not on that.
We're not on the agenda on this. Okay, good. We will move on to, do we want to do a block vote?
Yes.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I heard Commissioner Hartung vote on the phone in the affirmative.
Yes. For the record, Commissioner Hartung voted and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. LePere. Vice Chair Jung?
Yes, ma'am. I would make a motion to put into block Item 8, Items 8, 10, and 11. And I want to highlight number 11. This is Commission District Special Fund Disbursements. District 2 Commissioner Bob Lucy recommends a $10,000 grant, and District 4 Commissioner Von Hartung recommends a $15,000 grant, so a total of $25,000 to the Community Foundation of Western Nevada to establish the Youth Engaged in Service, yes, fund, which Commissioner Hartung had been funding before, and now it's much more formalized, and I think he's been able to get some money out of everybody for this. So that's my motion.
Okay, Mr. Manager, would you read them for us?
Be happy to do that. Item 8 is recommendation to authorize for a joint or contract to purchase institutional soft goods and supplies to the County of Sacramento, Contract Number WA00034777, inmate and detention supplies awarded to Bob Barker Company of Verena, North Carolina, and Victory Supply of Lexington, Kentucky. Estimated expenditures are in excess of $150,000 per contract term. Item 10 is recommendation to approve a non-endowed designated fund agreement with the Community Foundation of Western Nevada to establish a community fund for the Youth Engaged in Service program. And Item 11 is approved Commission District Fund Disbursement in the amount of $25,000 for fiscal year 2017-18. District 2 Commissioner Bob Lucy recommends a $10,000 grant, and District 4 Commissioner Von Hartung recommends a $15,000 grant to the Community Foundation of Western Nevada to establish the Youth Engaged in Service Fund, approved. Resolution necessary for same and Director of Customs Office to make the necessary disbursement of funds.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Chair, did we have a second on that motion?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Lucy, second to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Jung for the acknowledgement, thank Commissioner Lucy for his support and participation, and remind the young folks from the Youth Rodeo Association, I believe that's what it was, that they are eligible for a yes grant and can apply for it. So there is funding available for those kinds of programs through the yes grant. And again, thank you so much for the support from the board.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Any other commissioners have comments on these issues? Do we have any public comment? I thought we had.
We do, Madam Chair. On Item Number 8 and 9, we have public comment.
Okay. I'm not getting it for some reason on my agenda.
Okay, let's see.
So would you call it, please?
Oh, excuse me, 9 isn't part of block. I was just advised of that. So on Number 8, we have Kathy Brandhorst signed in?
Kathy Brandhorst?
Again, my name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. The contract to purchase institutional soft goods and supplies through the County of Sacramento. I just wanted to let you know, I've been through Sacramento, and all I hear is screams and cries. I was only there for a layover with a bus. It's called Greyhound Bus. I have never heard so much commotion in Sacramento. I was there for just about eight hours, nine hours, for an overlay with the Greyhound Bus Station. There was nothing they could do to help the people that needed help there. I never saw a police officer either. When they pulled out the bodies, they were already destroyed. You couldn't even tell that they were human bodies when they pulled them out and loaded them up in ambulance or even a remza. I was in shock because nobody would help these people at all. Even in that hotel, there were people screaming and screaming and hollering, you know, from that hotel in Sacramento downtown. And I was there. I heard all this going on. And these people didn't even have a chance either because when they pulled them out of the hotel, they were so badly damaged, they couldn't even see a face. I mean, I couldn't even see a face on that person because it was so bad. Those people didn't even have a chance either. I just wanted to tell you, you know, it is a bad area to be in. They advised the people who were on the Greyhound Bus Station, "We better think of another stop instead of stopping in Sacramento." I just wanted to tell you that the expenditures are in excess, an estimated of $150,000. Oh, at the Greyhound, they're not even hired to take, what do you call it, a ticket, to buy a ticket. They're not even hired as security officers either in Sacramento. They never were supposed to be carrying guns, but they do.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. Do we have any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we will bring this back to the board. And we have, do we have, we have a motion and a second?
Yes, ma'am.
So all those in favor of the block vote, please vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Commissioner Hartung voted aye also. And so for those of us here at the meeting, please cast your vote on the electronic service and then confirm your vote up on top. And Commissioner Hartung, for your information, you have voted yes. Is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, fine. We are, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody. And Mr. Manager, I believe we're now at 7.
We are at Item 7, which is recommendation to approve the refund of surplus assessment funds in the amount of $548,752.89 for the 975 properties in Special Assessment District Number 21, Cold Springs Sewer. And it's noted that there is no fiscal impact from this item to the general fund.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Davis? Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning.
Is it lit?
I believe it is.
All right.
For the record, I'm Tammy Davis, Washoe County Treasurer, and we have, for your consideration today, a recommendation to approve a refund of surplus assessment funds. Just as a little background, Special Assessment Districts are districts created for specific projects that benefit a group of parcels. Those parcels are assessed and pay the cost of that project. Quite often, there are bonds sold to cover the funding of that, and then the bonds are paid with the assessment revenues that come in. These can cover anywhere from a 10- to a 20-year period. This particular assessment was collected over 20 years. It has been fully collected, the bonds have been paid. And when that happens, statute has a very clear process for how we manage that. We look at certain costs that the district accumulated, make sure those are paid, and $50,000 automatically goes into the surplus and deficiency fund for Special Assessment Districts. And the remaining money, after costs are covered, is to be refunded to the owners of the property as of today, should you pass this item. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Are there any questions from anyone? I see no questions, but I do have some public comment. So we will go to public comment. Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. And for the record, I should note that Commissioner Hartung has left us and is not on the phone anymore.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. Recommendation to approve the refund of surplus assessment funds in the amount of $548,752.89 for the 975 properties in Special Assessment District 21. Well, I'll let you know, you know, destroying properties that you have to do in order to get on that property because you have no place to live. You have to destroy everybody's life, like shooting down police officers, then burying them inside the house walls. You know, that's not even enough money to cover all the damages that you did in the house. This house is located on Sky Mountain. You don't know how it is for me to get back to You don't know how it is for me to get back to Sky Mountain because I can't even get back into my home because you're forbidding me to be there. That house was burned down to the ground, but some of the police officers were pulled out of that house before the house burned down to the ground. But not all of them survived in that house. Those police officers were only responding to a 911 call, and you people, you know, had to go in and make sure that you were going to have a place to live, wasn't it? That's not your home. You don't live there. You don't need to destroy other people's, like murder the whole family just to steal the house? And murder the whole police department just to steal the house? There were so many police officers, we didn't think we were going to make it. We thought we were going to be under evacuation, but we made it because of one little boy. He pulled out more than half of those police officers out of that house, and those police officers are now being put back together for our protection here in Reno.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. I see no other public comment, so we'll bring this back to the board. Do we have, do we have any additional questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
No, Chair.
Motion, motion to approve.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Again, for the record, please note that Commissioner Hartung has left the meeting, and those who are here, please vote on the board, and please confirm your vote. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously with the absence of Commissioner Hartung. And now, we are on to item number nine. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, item nine is recommendation to create the agency fund titled Washoe County School District 2017 C Fund to track the investment of a $200 million bond proceeds for the Washoe County School District. And I believe we have both our treasurer and our comptroller here to present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. I know that there's some questions of some of the members of the board.
Okay. For the record, Tammy Davis, Washoe County Treasurer, and would you like to begin with questions or?
You want to do a presentation as so? Yeah. What, exactly what does this do?
What does this do? Okay. For a little bit of history, Washoe County has an investment pool, and historically, we have had other agencies that participate in that pool. One of those agencies is the Washoe County School District. They have participated long before I was treasurer, so I don't have a specific date. I can tell you, the earliest agreement that I was able to put my hands on easily was 2002. And in that time, we have consistently had funds belonging to the district in our pool. Recently, and I know you're all aware of this, WC-1 was passed by the voters of Washoe County, and a new sales tax was implemented with the funds obligated to the school for certain uses. And as a result of that, the school district went out and sold bonds to do those projects. And when they did that, the bond proceeds, they were, they approached me to see if those bond proceeds could also be held in our pool, so that, that gave them an efficient way to manage that. It's a structure we already had in place. They would not have to duplicate something that already existed to manage these funds. Because we had an agreement in place with them, and after speaking to the comptroller, the impact to the county was very minimal, we felt it was something that would be good partners to do this, to provide this, because it's something we already had in place. And historically, we have held their funds before. And so, this item for you today is basically to create that line item to account for those funds. And the comptroller may want to add to that.
For the record, Kathy Hill, comptroller, so we have to receive board's approval for any creation of a fund in our financial system, so following procedures that we've done before, we're following that regulation that's required.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, you said it has, this fund has very little impact on the county. What's, what impact?
Meaning, as far as what kind of work to maintain it? Because this entire process is already established, there's a little bit of, again, we have to create the fund, but it's part of a reporting process that's already in place. The bank accounts that this is managed through are already in place. So, we, there was minimal impact to our operations, minimal cost to the county, if anything that could be quantified, and it's something that already existed. Also, in looking at practices, pooling of investments is a common practice throughout, throughout the country. It varies state by state depending on the state law. In some states, it's mandatory. In fact, I have recently learned that in California, bond proceeds for school districts are mandated to be held by the county treasurer and invested. So, this is not something that's out of the ordinary. It is something a little bit new for us because no one's been selling new bonds, no one's had bond proceeds to deal with. But as far as having district monies and other partners in our pool, that's something that is longstanding, and we have interlocal agreements in place to manage that appropriately.
And there's no financial impact on our bond rating or standing of the county?
No, this has no tie to our bonds. It's simply a holding place for this money. Over the next two years, it will be spent on the schools' projects. It's being invested under the structure that we already had in place. So, other than a new line item on the reporting, there is a schedule of when those monies will be needed, which is something that we do regularly as well. So, it falls into a structure that we already had in place rather than having to duplicate that. So, the school district was looking for an efficient way to manage this.
Okay, good. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Lucy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Davis, I have, just, you know, I'm a little perplexed by this. So, you say that there's no benefit for the county, but yet there's no, there's no, I guess, no repercussions for us parking these funds. But we still, I still see it as any kind of administrative work that we, that you have to endure to manage this money, that, that's something of a benefit to them and not a benefit to us. So, and we're not gaining any interest from this, this is no benefit. Do we receive fees from the county, I mean, from the school district to park these funds?
Our current agreement with the school district does not provide for fees to us.
Okay. And so, when we have this disability to park said funds and we see no benefit from it, nor are we collecting any fees, is the, is the Washoe County School District, are they capable of parking their own funds? Do they have, I'm fairly certain they have their own bank accounts and their abilities to park these funds. Why, why are we doing this and not, are they, why us? What's the, what is the benefit? I mean, why, why do this?
Well, in general, the benefit of pooling funds is that you have less administration over a greater amount of funds.
Understood, and we just covered that. But you're doing still, you're doing the administration for no fees reserved, you know, returned to you. So, that's off the table. So, we're not getting anything for doing it. So, we're doing the work for them and not getting anything from it. What I want to know, outside of that, why are we doing it?
Well, I think historically, we've held their money, so we felt it was a good, we are serving the same constituents. It's a good way for that money to be managed most efficiently for our constituents is the best answer, I think I can offer.
Because we're serving the same people, we're willing to do this. Yet, consistently, the Washoe County School District acts independently of this board many time over. They have their own board of trustees, they have their own executive director, they have their own finance director who happened to be part of our team not too long ago, Mr. Mathers. There is realistically, in my mind, no benefit to Washoe County to do this, even though it is serving the same constituent base, just as the same as RTC serves the same constituent base, just as the same as RSCVA serves the same constituent base. We all have our own independent policies and manners in which we conduct business. But to us, for us to just start handling, handing out, and this has been my, one of my challenges all along. We, as a county, continuously give, get nothing in return, have to face continuous budget with shortfalls. We just had a budget meeting not too long ago where we're looking, that we are looking at five years of potential budget shortfalls because of, because of our continuous giving, and yet, we're not collecting anything from that. And that's frustrating to me. As an elected to represent my constituent base, who may not see the benefit from the school district at all, because there are a good portion in, that don't have kids that go to school. A lot of seniors in here that are paying into taxes and different things of that nature that don't see that benefit, but yet, pay their taxes that pay your salaries and your staff salaries, and we continuously service. So, I have a real problem with parking funds unless we have fees that are paid for it.
Kathy Hill, for the record, I'd like to interject here, Commissioner Lucy, that the fees that are charged by the investment firm, the expenses associated with that are diluted amongst all participants that are in the pool. So, we do get a benefit at that end that we don't, we're not responsible for all the fees for the basis points that they charge us, and as the dollar amounts are increased, we get a benefit from that. So, while it's directly associated to our balance sheet, we do get a benefit on the reduction of the costs associated with PFM services.
Commissioner Hill, can you tell me one thing? What is their current, what is, do you know what the Washoe County School District's annual budget is?
I do not know.
You do not? Neither one of you do know none of that? Okay. They, my opinion is that they are the largest employer in Washoe County. Second, I mean, they're more, they're more, they are a larger employer than we are here in Washoe County. They employ more people, and they have a better, from my recollection, they have a larger operating budget than we do. And so, but yet, we're pulling our funds, we see, they see benefit because of all the work that our investment committee and all our time that we've done, and all the structure that we've put into, the times that we meet, yet, don't have to put in the work. That just is frustrating to me. It just is. And I'm very sorry, and that's my opinion, and, but that is my opinion based upon how I see this at this current time. So, I have a real tough time with this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jung, thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Commissioner Jung, Vice Chair Jung.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I don't know which one of you to ask this. Oopsie. Hello, okay. Who else do we have in our investment pool? Because I think this will be very eye-opening. I can name two right now, RSCVA and RTC, the two richest agencies in our region. So, please name all of them so that the commissioner can be aware of that.
It's like, I apologize for overspeaking, Commissioner Jung. I can't name all of them, there's like three pages long, but we do have RTC, TRFM, Trucking Metals Fire Protection Districts in there.
That's ours. I said outside of us.
We hold money for a brief period of time for Reno Tahoe Airport, RTC that you mentioned. That's, the monies are held in there for the taxes that flow through the county for a brief period of time for the outlining cities.
Right. So, my point is, again, much richer agencies with a lot more cushion are using us, and we charge nothing. And this never comes up in the, when we get the fiscal equity questions, we never say, well, what has the county done for me lately? And this is not school district specific. This is practices. And I also have a question. Why did the school district approach you, Ms. Davis, and not the policymakers?
Well, I can't speak, Tammy Davis, for the record, I can't speak for the school district, but my impression would be because historically, when the school district has had money flowing in and out of this pool, I've been the one they've dealt with.
So, wouldn't it be your job then to tell them, you know, you're really going to need to get this as an agenda item to approach the board because this is a policy issue, not a treasurer's issue?
Well, at the time I was approached, I did not recognize it as that, certainly hearing your concerns. How we have done this historically, it sounds like is not something that, I'm hearing concerns about that. I believe that's a conversation we certainly need to have. And typically, those begin at the investment committee. I can tell you, that is definitely an agenda item for our next meeting because we want to reflect, this agreement was finalized with the school district in 2010. It certainly can be reviewed and.
Of which Judge Humke signed, and nobody else here except me was on the board then. So, that's also way out of line of policy. That should be an update once the board changes like that. And I'm going to approve this today, but I do want to keep an eye on this. And I did ask you also, what's the best practices? You said California. Well, we're not California proudly. I've been 18 and a half years here transplant, and I did some chain migration of my brother and my mother and father. So, when you say Cali, that's the way they do it in California, there's a reason why people don't live in California anymore.
I understand that. California is the state that I am most familiar with, their practices, but this is a practice throughout the country. It varies state by state depending on their specific laws.
I need to know through your professional organization what the best practices are. You belong to a professional organization that taxpayers pay for. Surely, you could go to them, like we could go to NACO, and ask them, what is the gold standard and best practice?
And I am, I am working on that research, I just don't have it completed yet.
Okay. And I think we need to do a presentation when you are ready to get board direction on how we handle anything like this. Again, if any other entity, governmental entity approaches any other elected department head, policy lies with us, not with the elected department head. And that's, that's where I'm really upset, is the lanes. The lane's not being clear. And as I said to you in our private meeting, when an elected department head does something out of their lane, it's the board of county commissioners that get their, that get their, they get the heat from the media, you know? When the sheriff's NAF care contract did not perform, or we had some jail deaths, who did they call? The board of county commissioners. You know what they said? Because you approved this contract. I'm like, yeah, it wasn't the consent item, and I, what do I know about a jail and how to maintain it appropriately? So, this is just, when I saw this at the investment committee, as you know, that really bothered me. And if something goes wrong in any of these investments, the taxpayers are not going to go, oh, the school board of trustees, it's all their fault. They're going to come back to us and say, why did you allow this? They have a bigger budget, they have more FTE. So, again, I'm going to approve it because I don't want to put them in a bad situation because I want them to spend this money and build those schools ASAP. Hug High should be the number one next. But I just need to make that very clear to the rest of the department heads that this is not okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Commissioner Lucy?
I have a quick question to Commissioner Jung, if that's okay. Sorry, Commissioner Biggler. Just for clarification, Commissioner Jung, this is with regards to all participants that are in the pool, just not Washoe County School District specifically, so all the other entities that I was unable to name today, you want to look at best practices with regards to the county treasurer maintaining this pool?
Yeah. I want to know what the best practices nationwide is for this type of issue.
Okay.
And I know why they did it in California, because they didn't trust the school district with the money, and they wanted to have a backstop. That's why that's a law. But that's not the law here.
Maybe it should be.
Maybe it should be.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Commissioner Lucy?
Commissioner, thank you, Madam Chair. And I, you know, I want to follow up on what Commissioner Jung says. Yeah, I absolutely do want to see that RTC and the other, and the other members of the, of the group are participating, and that there are best practices, and that there is policy change. Because we, as a governing board of this county, have to have that, that authority to maintain that, those kind of, it is not, it is not anybody else but this board's decision to do so. That's why you're here today, that's why these discussions need to be had, and this should have never come in this, in this fashion. We should have been well aware of this ahead of time and had a better understanding before this got to us. This is just, you know, and not, and I agree, Washoe County School District is not, what the usage of these funds is, it's meaningless, really, what the overarching discussion here is, that this is the type of work that needs to be done well in advance instead of just, well, this is how we've always done it. That is just not acceptable, nor has it ever been acceptable since I've said on this board. And we've made tremendous amount of changes, and it's frustrating that we're consistently going back to some of the old ways of doing things. And so, and, yeah. Anyways, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. We have some public comments, so if we could take that at this time. Mr. Sam Denae. Welcome, Mr. Denae.
Sam Denae Denae, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government, he knows more about all this stuff than all the supposedly elected officials added together. I'm the official, I'm the official nominator of Jeff Bezos for president campaign as of today. What we have here is one of the most damnable, and one of, because there's been a lot of them, one of the most damnable votes in the history of northern Nevada, maybe all of Nevada. The vote riggers want the people. all of Nevada. The vote riggers want the people to believe that the citizens out there voted in favor of an infinite tax that can be handled by all, mostly amateurs, the people on that school board. None of them, virtually none of them have a schooling education background, so they're amateurs, and they're going to run this infinite tax that never, ever ends. You, and you, and you, and you, and you are all going to be taxed for the rest of your lives and your children's lives, so that the school board can go and use this money to do who knows what. You take that Wild Creek school, they're going to spend 140 million of those dollars to build a $40 million school. That's what should be looked at. Not that these two over here don't have a point well taken in what they're talking about, but this is really, there's a case could be made that the Russians conspired in this, in that election. She's nodding her head. No, I did my own survey, and I found nobody out of maybe 300 people, strangers, nobody was going to vote for that infinite school bond tax from a year ago. That, if there was ever a rigged election, and there's been a lot of them that looked like they were rigged, that was the one that was rigged. And my point being, now they got this committee, the committee was created of the regular, usual suspect who's who, who have a lot of money to be made off of this tax, and they were the ones running this committee, saying, we need an infinite tax, ladies and gentlemen. And somehow, they got, must have, some of the vote riggers must have been on that same committee, because there's no way that that vote went by, went down. Nobody wants an infinite tax, nobody. On everything you have, your shots of tequila down at the bar, your coffee in the morning, all of that stuff, nobody wanted that, ladies and gentlemen. So, that's what we should be looking at. Somebody should be investigating the election system, and get hold of Donald Trump, or that Mueller guy, and find out, maybe that's the election that the, that the riggers use to figure, if citizens can get by with that election, then they can get by with any election they want. I think that's what should be looked at. And if you're going to form this committee, I mean, I'm not forming, you should remove somebody from that committee, and put Levi Hooper, candidate for Reno mayor, on that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Diney.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
Hello. Well, for me, it's going to be a lot more complaints. This is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I've been, I've, well, let me see, I have two little children that live, they're my neighbors. And this morning, when I found them with somebody that's an adult, they were a lot smaller than what they used to be.
Oh, my God.
The electric chainsaw again, and kidnapping. I just wanted to tell you, you know, I've been getting lots and lots of complaints over on C Street where I live. Pregnant girls. The youngest is two and a half, pregnant. The oldest is nine years old, pregnant. They have to go to school, and this is what's the problem. When they go to school, they're complaining they were raped. Yes, by adults. Who are the adults? They're all, always on death row.
Ms. Brandhorst, are you speaking on item number nine, the Washoe County School District?
County School District, yes. Because $200 million bond is not enough to cover for what you did. You also went into the school with your machine gun and shot down all the teachers. You destroyed the whole school. How are we going to afford, you know, to put that school back together? Where are all the teachers going to come from? They're dead. You had to go in with your machine gun and make sure that the teachers were dead. Lots of bullets in their bodies to keep their mouths shut. Incubators are back again. A four and a half-year-old girl, we found her body after she was pregnant.
Oh, gosh.
The River House, I lived there because I was homeless too. This little girl was laying down on the floor. She was crying and crying because she was raped by an adult. He plays a police officer, never hired. A sheriff, never hired. They carry badges, guns, but never hired.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. Seeing no more public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Do I have a motion on this agenda item?
Move to approve with further direction to bring this back to the board for future policy decision, but not wanting to delay the school district to build my hug high. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Mr. Liparelli, I see you smiling. Is that motion acceptable to you?
I'm delighted by it.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please cast your vote. For the record, Commissioner Hartung is not here. Please confirm your vote. The vote passes four to nothing with Commissioner Hartung missing. Thank you very much, and we will move on. Mr. Manager. Thank you, ladies.
Madam Chair, I believe that takes us to item 12?
12, I think so, yes.
Yes, we're on item 12. And this is discussion, possible action with regard to appointments and a reappointment of commissioners to boards and commissioners, alteration of terms of service on boards and commissions where legally permissible, and such other action as the board of commissioners may desire to take in regards to those administrative matters. And I apologize for the confusion on the handouts. You should have before you a handout that has a handwritten note at the bottom that says number 12-V3, version three. The board had a previous, had had a previous discussion about these items. A couple of things I wanted to do to bring this back to you, to, at base level, to make sure that we've collected the information correctly from that discussion. But I wanted to point out a couple of items. On the Community Assistance Center Transitional Governing Board, which is listed, the very first committee that's listed, there is a change being proposed to that particular board that will be coming to you in the form of a resolution and possible appointments. The change will be in the scope, adding homelessness in general for the region as a topic of that, rather than just the Assistance Center, and then also adding an additional representation for each of the three entities, Reno Sparks and Washoe County. So, that'll be coming to you very soon. On the second page of the document, under the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council, the SLU PAC, at the previous meeting where this was reviewed, the board had moved and approved Commissioner Hartung being on this particular commission, or council. We have heard since from the governor's office, these are terms that the governor sets when he makes the appointments, and unless there's a resignation, the governor does not make a change to those positions. And then finally, at the time we brought to you this last time, we had inadvertently, I think because it was new, we had left off the Animal Services Advisory Board, which is the last listed on this particular sheet. Those were the things I wanted to highlight to you, as well as to mention that it should also be titled, "The 2018 Commissioners." So, that, we'll make that change when we get the document finalized.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes, I do see, I knew the Animal Services Board was an issue that concerned me, and I know that Commissioner Jung has asked to be placed on the Animal Services Board. So, as, if you want to do one motion for any changes we want to make, or can we do, how do you want to do it? Commissioners?
How many changes are we thinking?
There's a couple.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Lucy.
Madam Chair, you know, there's a couple that we need to make, and some discussions that we need to have today. And Mr. Slaughter, is the Community Assistance Center Transitional Governing Board the one that Commissioner Jung has a primary? That one's going to be the one converted to the CHAB, which is the Community Housing Advisory Board, correct?
That's correct. That change will come, and actually, this now reflects that Commissioner Lucy is an alternate. There's actually no provisions in that, for that, for an alternate for that. That's one of the reasons why, but the change is coming, I believe at our next meeting.
Well, actually, the bylaws were passed, correct, at the last meeting.
So, the bylaws were recommended for approval by the Transitioning Governing Board, that then will now go to each of the three entities individually for approval, for review and approval through resolution, and then appointments-
At that time.
At that time.
Okay. So, do we want to take, I mean, because we know what that outline's going to be, do we want to, instead of, do we want to try to take that on now, or just wait? Okay, we'll just wait.
I would suggest we not, because it's listed on this document as the, as Community Assistance Center Transitional Governing Board. It's coming to you with a different name later.
And the other question I have, really quick, Madam Chair, is, you know, the Business Improvement District that we have done resolutions and supported, that is an operating board at this, the Business Improvement District?
Oh, the Business Improvement District.
Hasn't been formed yet.
It hasn't?
Not, they have, the city has to pass an ordinance-
Yes.
-which it hasn't done yet. It's planning to. Then, then the governing board of the private entity can be given its duties.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner, Vice Chair Jung, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I still want to ask council, should we take it one at a time in a vote? Can we put them all together? What's clearer for you in the record, and for the clerk?
Any way you want to do it is fine, as long as it's done publicly. So, a suggestion would be-
Let's do one by one.
Have a discussion, come to a consensus on what it's all going to look like, and then pass one motion doing everything.
Okay, good. That's fine. So, I would actually make the motion, which I know is a little unusual. I don't normally do that as sitting chair, but if it's okay with you guys, I will make the motion. And my motion would be to assign Commissioner Jung to the Animal Services Board, and to put Commissioner Lucy on the TM Water Board. It's the Trucking Metals Water Authority. I think-
Yes.
Commissioner Lucy currently serves as an alternate, and I'd like to put him on there as primary, because he is dealing with serious water issues down in his South Valleys area, and I think he needs to be primary to be dealing with that on a constant basis.
But give, the primary being from who?
That's acceptable to you, Commissioner Lucy. I'm a little worried about your water issue down there.
Yeah, but changing the primary from which primary, so currently-
The Trucking Metals Water Authority, so Tamoa.
Yes, but the two representatives, from which representative are you changing primaries from? So, you're taking primary role from who?
Oh, there are two on there. Yeah, I actually, if it's okay with Commissioner Herman, I'd like to leave Commissioner Hartung on there, because he's already working on a project on that, and I'd like to keep him on there. But I am very concerned about your water issues down in the south. And so, if you would take that on, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And then, I think also the Western Regional Water Commission-
I serve on that one. It's actually-
You're already serving on that?
The Trucking River Flood Authority.
Okay, I just wanted to, I'm really very concerned about your water issues, and so I want to make sure we get you on those water boards.
And the flood, and the flood-
Oh, you want to, and flood control, that's right. That's the other one.
So, who are you replacing there?
Commissioner Hartung, or Commissioner, Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman Jung, let me get this straight.
Chairwoman, chairwoman, very proud to be a woman. Thank you.
You are not on flood control, and you don't want to be on it? Is that what you told me?
Yeah, I don't love the flood project.
Well, you know, Madam Chair, and just-
And that's all water.
And the, the one reason I would urge, that I would maintain that primary spot on both Trucking Metals Water Authority and Trucking River Flood Authority, is that obviously for Trucking Water, the water issues in the South Valleys are going to be tremendous in regards to that. And then also, the Trucking River Flood Authority, a majority of the flood authority, which is only for flood projects within, along the Trucking River, goes right through the boundaries of Commissioner Hartung's and my district, who are really the most impacted areas of the flood project. And so, that's why I would request that I be put back. And I served on the flood prior, and I would ask to be put back. I did relinquish that duty as chairman last year.
Okay, and so, that, we talked about that at the last meeting, I believe, both Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Lucy wanted to stay on, wanted to be on as primary.
Yes, that's correct.
Because the river runs right through their area. So, once again, Commissioner, Commissioner Herman, we're going to move you to alternate, if that's okay. You still will have a role to play on that, but I do agree that Commissioner Lucy's got big water issues going on in his area, so I am concerned about that. So, that would be my motion. Is that clear to you, Madam Clerk? You know which changes I'm proposing?
It's, it got a little bit muddy, muddy. Maybe I can try and reiterate what my notes say, and see if staff agrees with me, and if you agree with what we've got.
Okay.
Assign Commissioner Jung to the Animal Advisory Council.
Yes.
Change Commissioner Lucy to primary on the Trucking Metals Water Authority, and Commissioner Hartung is also primary on the Trucking Metals Water Authority.
So, Commissioner Herman will go as alternate on that.
Okay. That was the one I was fuzzy on.
And I know Commissioner Herman's got a lot of water issues in her area, but I think we're working on those. We aren't working on Commissioner Lucy's yet, and I'm very worried about how that's going to go. So, that's what we're doing.
Okay. And then, Western Regional Water remains with Commissioner Lucy as primary?
Yes.
Is Commissioner Hartung on that as well?
And then, Trucking, then in the flood management authority.
Flood control, I've got Commissioner Lucy, and Commissioner Hartung as primary with Commissioner Herman as the alternate.
Yes, yes, she's our alternate.
Then I think we've got it.
Okay, good. Did I hear a second?
Madam Chair, as a way of clarification, the Animal Services Advisory Board-
Yes.
I heard a little different language. I just want to be very clear about that, that that's the board that we're speaking of. It's listed last. And I just confirmed with Cheyenne Shul, there are alternates allowed on that, an alternate is allowed on that board.
Okay.
So, we want to make sure we consider that as well.
So, then perhaps, I don't know.
I think you'd be great, Madam Chairwoman. You're a big animal activist with Daisy and Duke, and all your support of the Nevada Humane Society.
My babies.
So, can I put Marcia on that one, too?
I'll be glad to take that as the alternate. And I think we also need to put in this motion that Commissioner Herman is staying on SLU PAC, because we had made that change last time, so we need to change that back. So, Commissioner Herman is going to stay on SLU PAC.
She refused to step down.
And so, Commissioner Lucy.
Just a little bit of discussion here. You know, I want to, I want to make a statement and put this on the record. You know, we act as a board here, and no one sole individual actor is above any other commissioner. We, that is, that's why we were elected as five commission member board, is to serve the needs of the greater community and have balance here. And we need to continue to support each other and respect the direction of this board as a whole. So, when the board gives direction, whether it's in your favor or not in your favor, and there's been many a times, we've, all of us have been on different types of votes, we still respect the board as a whole. Our manager operates, and every, and every department within this, in this county operates under the direction of this board as a whole. So, when direction is given, and commissioners are given the opportunity to serve and represent the county on these individuals, these individual boards, we need to take the advice and direction of the board as a whole, and not have our independent, our individual motions or guidance predicate what we should and shouldn't do. If this board makes a decision, that should be the decision of the board. And, you know, when we ask and put commissioners on these boards, we respect that you are going to go and serve as a member of the county, and a member of the board, and bring that information back. Because there are many times when Commissioner Jung, for example, has, does not serve an RTC, and Commissioner Hartung and I do. She has asked, as a member of this commission, because I am the representative, to carry forward a message on her behest. And I have done that, without question, time and time again, and made those requests, and I have brought forth a number of her issues- and I have brought forth a number of her issues and made them a reality for her, because I am a member of this board. And we continue need to do that, and so no commissioner should act independently. And it frustrates me that independent commissioners act independently and do their own thing without having any discretion of, or any manner to step outside of that, and really, and take care of the age matters of this board. So that would be my own, my statement, I'd like to put on the record. I sit here frustrated that certain members of this commission choose to do things in their own independent way without, but that, I guess, that's how the board, I guess this board is operating these days, and hopefully that we, that would change in the near future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy, I back you on that, and I think it's, as I tell people when I speak at meetings, that once you're elected to the commission, you don't represent just your district, you represent the county, and therefore, as a representative of the county, you are to work as a team with the rest of the commissioners, so I completely agree with you. Okay, I think we've covered it, we do have a motion, I see no public comment, we have a motion in a second, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Liparelli, Commissioner Liparelli.
Madam Chair, I just want to confirm, the motion includes adding Commissioner Burkbigler as an alternate to the animal.
Yes.
And Commissioner Herman being confirmed as primary on SLU PAC.
Yes, it does.
Which I don't think those were in the original motion, so does the second, we'll get a confirmation that the person who made the second agrees.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we have a motion in a second, we have no public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And please cast your vote. And remember that Commissioner Hartung is not with us, and so he is not voting here. And we, please confirm your vote. The motion carries three, one, with Commissioner Herman voting no. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, our next item is item 13, which is an introduction, first reading, of an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Washington Code by expanding the recorder's fee.
Would you like the introduction, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
This will be Bill Number 1796, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 miscellaneous and additional taxes of the Washington Code, imposing an increased fee on the recording of certain of the proceeds, on, excuse me, by imposing an increased fee on the recording of certain documents by the county recorder, with the proceeds used to provide legal services for abused and neglected children, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Commissioners, do you want a presentation?
No, thank you, I know this was an outcome of the 2017 legislative session.
Okay.
And I will introduce Bill 1796.
To be heard on.
Oh, sorry, I always forget that. To be, for the second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance on, wait a minute, can't be the 13th.
No, that isn't, that's got to be a mistake, isn't it, today?
It is. Sorry. Jamie Rodriguez, for the record, I apologize, we had a little confusion with the staff reports that were submitted to you, so there's been an amended one that you should have received, so we are asking for a second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance on February 27th.
And that's what I meant to say. Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Manager. We have a public hearing?
We do, item 14, this is a public hearing item, this is a second reading of an ordinance amending Washington Code, Chapter 5.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read this for us?
Certainly, Madam Chair. This is, will be Ordinance 1611, an ordinance amending the Washington Code at Chapter 5, Administration and Personnel by Repealing Provisions Relating to Family Medical, Family and Medical Leave Act at 5.270, and this was issued Bill Number 1795.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions, any, would you like a presentation on this?
No.
Okay, do I have somebody to introduce it for me?
Nope, second reading.
Oh, adopt it, not introduce it, adopt it for me. It's 1611.
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt ordinance number 1611. Is that correct?
Correct.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, I see no public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please cast your vote, and then confirm your vote. Motion carries four, nothing, and remember that Commissioner Hartung is not with us, and so the motion carries. That closes the public hearing, so we close the public hearing, and Mr. Manager.
That takes us to item 15, which is public comment.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to tell you, you know, you don't live on C Street, and beating children until their heads fly off of their shoulders for a million-dollar check is needing to be stopped. You are trespassing, you are not living there, you don't live there at all, you seem to have no place to live, because there's been a lot of complaints in the neighborhood that you are homeless, and you don't have a place to live, and that's why you're there on the property. And we are getting very, very tired of people who don't live there on the property. There have, there's children that do live in our area, there's a park there, there's a school there, and you need to realize that these children live there, and they live with grandparents, they live with their parents, and they need to have some peace from the people from death row. You don't need your million-dollar check just to beat these children until they are abused so badly that they are not recognized, but you put them back together as adults, and then you're saying that these are the same children, and they are, they are the same children as adults. You chop their waistlines, you give them breasts, because they're only a year and a half old, or maybe two years old. You do chop their waistlines again, and you give them longer legs, so they look much older than what they really are. These children have been abused enough, they need to be left alone, and so does C Street. They can't even walk down to the grocery store for something to drink, because you people attack them. You also attack their dogs, their cats that they walk with, down the sidewalk, the street, down to the store. And when we find them, they are just ripped and torn, because you people have to keep beating them until there's nothing left of their bodies. And also, there was an empty bag, well, we thought it was an empty bag, but later we found this small, tiny person living inside a plastic bag, it's only about five or six inches tall, because that's what, oh, that was left of the human body. Oh, my God. So we really appreciate it, if you people could find yourself a place to live off of C Street, and don't be killing and murdering children for your million-dollar check.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst, thank you very much. I see no further public comment, we'll close, close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, I think we're at 16.
Our last item is item 16.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Manager?
I have nothing.
Commissioners, anything else to add?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lucy?
One thing is that I am expecting my baby girl tomorrow, and my wife will be delivering, her wife is going to be delivering Kitty Junior. Tomorrow, hopefully the doctor's going in, will be going to the hospital tomorrow morning. But I do have RTC this Friday, and I will probably not be in attendance, because I will be at the hospital with my wife. So I would ask that my alternate, one of you commissioners, be able to attend, and hopefully Commissioner Hartung will be healthy enough to attend on Friday as well, but I would just ask that one of you would be able to do that. It would be 9:00 AM here.
I can't make it.
On Friday.
Sorry.
And I have the agenda packet in my office.
I can make it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll handle it. You are welcome. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the commissioners? With that being said, no more comments, we are adjourned. Thank you.